Welcome to the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee and I call it to order at seven o'clock. All right, if everybody could please join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So for everybody at home we are going to, I'm going to take a motion in a second to go into executive session. After executive session we will come back and continue with our meeting. So if somebody could give me a motion and say what it's for.
I move, oh, did you look?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Ms. Fager.
I just saw you look at me when I-
I'm still not signing my computer too, but I thought I was fine.
You're fine. I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of, oh my gosh, collective bargaining.
Discussing matters-
Personal matters. Oh, collective bargaining and personal matters.
And Ms. Burgess, seconds?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Not personal.
Personal.
Personal, not personal.
Personal. All right, Dr. Sorensen?
Yes.
Ms. Fager?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Pizzano?
Yes.
And is Ms. Hayward here yet? No? Hayward? Hayward.
Yep, there she is.
Do you vote to go into executive session?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we will adjourn right now or move into executive session and we will come back when we're done.
Welcome back, everybody. We are out of executive session. And the first order of business is we have, I think, one comment from our community members. And I believe Ms. Rio is up there. I see her. Would you like to go ahead, just say your name and who you are and give us your comment?
Oh, Lizzie, you're muted. You're muted, Liz.
That's a common thing, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Lizzie. I'm an art teacher at Plymouth South Middle School. And unfortunately, I was sick with COVID just a few short weeks ago. As I'm sure that you can imagine, it was not a walk in the park. In fact, it was a terrible couple of weeks filled with sickness and fear, anxiety, and uncertainty. And not only did I feel these feelings for myself, but also for my family, my friends, colleagues, and of course, anyone that I may have come in contact with. And the reason why I've asked to speak here today is because through all of that, there was always one big source of comfort for me. And that comfort was knowing that while I was sick there was an entire team of fellow teachers and staff that were there to help me and to engage with my students in my absence. Our vice principal, Sarah Grant, reached out to me shortly after learning that I had been sick. She was so kind and assured me that everything was going to be just fine and that everything would be taken care of at school. Her only concern was my well-being. My fellow colleagues covered some of my classes as well with finesse, as if their own schedules were busy enough. Erin Walsh, Maureen Sullivan, Jill Doherty, and my dear, awesome friend and colleague Lauren LaFontaine, to name just a few. All of my students expressed that they love seeing these familiar faces. And the teacher who covered my classes for the most part is former teacher at PSMS and now substitute teacher for the pure pleasure of being with our students and at our school. She is definitely a part of the PSMS family. Susan St. Marie took over my class without missing a beat. In fact, she is an artist herself and participates in many community projects. She expertly introduced a Plymouth Collaboration project to my students and provided imagery of her own work for the project, as well as printed all the information out for them. She consistently goes above and beyond of what is expected of her. I want to thank her and recognize her, as well as a part of all that she does for the Plymouth Public Schools and for our students. And I'd also like to share some of the notes that my students wrote on her behalf. Michael wrote, "She helps like every kid. She subs in for almost all of my classes." Amelia wrote, "Mrs. S. was very caring and helped each and every student in this class at least one time, at least one time, in the time she was here. She is also an extremely good artist." "You are awesome," Mrs. S. from Sean. "Mrs. St. Marie was very helpful," from Jack. "Mrs. St. Marie was very nice and explained everything, and she's amazing," from Ethan. Ariana, "Thank you for sharing and for being so flexible with the students and also very kind and helpful." And one of the last ones that I'll read, even though there's many more, is "Thank you for teaching us when Miss Rio was sick. I appreciate the time and fun projects that you taught us during those times." So I guess my hope by being here and sharing this tonight is in expressing this to you all is that more parents, administrators, students, and fellow teachers will begin to recognize that focusing on all the good, positive, and kindness that's happening will help reduce the struggles, difficulties, and stresses that we all face along. So thank you. Stay safe and stay positive. And I appreciate you letting me come on here.
Yes, thank you so much. We're so happy that you're better and you're on your road to recovery and everything's doing good. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, guys. Great to see you all. Take care.
Great. All right. Next up, we have our student representatives from Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School. Looks like we have the dynamic duo up there, ready to present. We have Karen and Alexandra. Hi, guys. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi. So we did the same thing as always. We did our presentation.
Sorry, the sharing option is currently unavailable right now.
Should work now, Karen. Just fixed it, Karen. Can you share yet, Karen? No? Okay, good.
All right, we're good.
Okay, so today was a lot of kids called it the second first day of school because we all saw, a lot of people saw their friends from the other cohort today. So today was the high school kids' first day back, full in-person learning. And it was also a half-day, and they were dismissed at 11:05 a.m. There were no lunches, but free breakfast was served for anyone who was interested. Both schools did a great job at transitioning for the first day, and we'll see how the next few days continue to look. So for South's first day back, Ms. Fire would like to say that South had a great first day back. While we aren't perfect, students and staff adjusted well, and it was great to see students greeting one another in the classroom in person for the first time all year. It's hard to believe that it's been 13 months since everyone was last together. One of South's math teachers, Mrs. Cochrane, took the picture, which you can see in the corner above, of the rainbow over the school at sunrise this morning, a sign of bright times ahead. The slogan "Better Together" is well-known at Plymouth South. And today was also on the lawn as students and staff arrived, which you can see in the other photo on top, as well as that slogan was used to greet students all morning.
So at North, following the DESI's guidelines, students experienced a minimum of three feet distancing as required when they're masked. If they were unmasked, it was required to be six feet apart. The further away was better and recommended as well. The classrooms kind of felt a little stuffier with all the students and desks. Classes can consist from 10 to 20 or more students. Teachers and guidance have been very accommodating so far to fit the comfortability of students. And tiered dismissals attempted to avoid the overcrowding of students entering and exiting the classrooms. And this morning, Mr. Parson filmed a live announcement this morning to reiterate the guidelines and encourage students and staff on their first day back together. And there he is.
So for Plymouth South, one of our professional learning community staff groups recently was awarded a grant from the Plymouth Education Foundation to have a Be Kind Week at Plymouth South High School. The group has produced a video where Mr. Fornishari stars as the role of Mr. Rogers that was shown during advisories last week. Many of our students don't know who Mr. Rogers is, but the staff got quite a kick out of the production. Also, they are selling the Be Kind mask in both yellow and black. And students are signing banners this week. And advisories created kindness rocks that are also fantastic. Last week, students in our Strive program organized a Light It Up Blue Day for autism awareness. Proceeds from this great event go to the Strive annual scholarship.
Awesome. So something we wanted, Alex and I wanted to highlight, was actually the food services at North and South and through the district, actually. We tend to talk about this often, but we don't really go into it that well. So students until the end of the year have been able to get free lunch and breakfast. So this has alleviated, sorry, stress about debt and packing a meal every day. So a few meetings ago, like a while back, we were talking about how a lot of the federal funding or the funding can cover some of the debt. But for families this year, this has really helped a lot and caused less concerns about it. So if a student also qualifies for a free lunch pre-COVID during continuing, the P E B T is a federal program that DESI operates to give students the opportunity to receive benefits for food. So this has been also really beneficial to families outside of the classroom as well to, again, all the food insecurities that has happened so far due to the pandemic. So in our district, we've also been hosting Farmers to Families program. This happens on Saturday mornings where perishable food boxes are being provided to these families that need them the most. And there is also another district-wide program called the Weekend Backpack Program. There's a private form for both of these, and basically it provides a bag of food to students to take home at the end of the week as well.
So for seniors at South, students of the classes of 2022, 2023, and 2024 created signs for each senior in the building to congratulate them as we are ending the year soon. You can see them in the corner. They're all lined up on the cafeteria windows. The underclassmen realize this year has not been ideal for our seniors, so the posters were displayed throughout the halls near the cafeteria this morning upon arrival to school. The seniors really appreciated this gesture when they arrived at school. You also see that lawn signs will start to pop up around Plymouth and neighborhoods for our graduates. The senior class organized this fundraiser, and they were available to families for pickup last week.
All right, awesome. So the eagle of the day today was our custodians, who have done an incredible job at moving furniture and sanitizing the building to keep our students ready to learn, and we appreciate them so very much.
And then for South Athletics, so we're finishing up the Fall Two season this week. And then for South Athletics, so we're finishing up the Fall Two season this week. Our football team has had a great deal of success with the big win over Situate on Friday night. Senior Jack Condon highlighted as a Boston Globe Player of the Week. They will play for the league title this weekend. The track team had an in-person meet against North last week, and this week will be participating in another in-person league invitational. Finally, our dance and cheer teams have organized showcases for family and staff to watch them perform. And then spring sports are coming up. They begin on Monday, April 26. And we remind students to submit all necessary paperwork and user fees. This season will have both a Patriot Cup and state tournaments. They will both return per the MIAA.
We're really excited for our athletes. It seems like we're kind of getting back to normal, so it's really great. Fall Two at North is wrapping up shortly. Tryouts for the spring season will be after April vacation on the 26th for North students as well. So, there's currently sport-specific voluntary practices that are now available for students to get extra conditioning in. Also, check out the softball Twitter for senior athlete spotlights. This can be found at P N H S Softball. And also check out the athletics page as well for more updates and highlights. Oh. There we go.
And then some upcoming dates for South. AP testing will be held from May 3rd to the 17th. All students are already aware of their testing times and locations. We could not have our annual AP breakfast this year due to COVID, but we again have a student-designed t-shirt for the 11th annual year for all students that are enrolled in the AP course. Cohort B juniors, who signed up in advance, will take the SAT in the gymnasium tomorrow. Our Live Panther TV broadcast, that is a highlight of each year, is taking place on April 29. And then for MCAS for sophomores, May 18th through the 21st in math and English Language Arts will happen. And Grade Nine will have Science MCAS on June 8th and 9th. And then for Grade 11, MCAS will not be happening this spring.
Alright, so what's happening at North? Some good news is the freshman class is having a children's clothing drive to benefit Cradles to Crayons starting April 1st. And going through the end of the month, students can bring in gently-used or new children's clothes and shoes to any of the donation box around the school. DECA is also holding its first month of giveaways fundraiser. And raffle tickets, oh my God, are $2 each and can be purchased between April 5th and through April 26th from any marketing student. There will be a drawing every school day in May. Senior events will be held also in May that's coming up. And they were advised to continue to check out the Google Classroom for upcoming weeks for additional information.
And then make sure to check out the senior signing pages on Instagram to see where our Eagles and Panthers are headed after graduation.
Alright, stay safe and stay smart. Our quote today is, "It's your reaction to adversity, not adversity itself that determines how your life story will develop." Thank you.
Great. Thank you. As always, that was wonderful. You reminded me to put on my Be Kind mask because Ms. Fry gifted me one because she knows that it's my family motto, so I have it on now, so. But thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or comments for the students? No? Alright. Great job as always, girls. Thank you. Alright, next up, we have our school improvement plans, and we're starting with Cold Spring Elementary School. Hi, Ms. Morgan. Oh, you're muted.
I'm muted. I do that all the time. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I'm happy to be here to present to you this evening. I'm going to share my screen with you and for my improvement plan. And, you know, this is our second review of this current plan. So, last year, we weren't able to present due to our closing for COVID. So, I'm happy to be here to tell you about all the great work that our council has put together and that our great team of teachers done over the past year. I really want to recognize my council members for their great work. My parents, Dr. Rick Kudmore, Mrs. Ryan Toomes, and Mrs. Taryn Dickey. And then my teacher representatives, Ms. Michelle Lombard, Ms. Caitlin Marsher. And then this year, I have two administrative interns that are working on the internship. So, I have Mrs. Stephanie Van Winkle and Mrs. Rebecca Rosen Trippalotti, who have all been instrumental in helping us put our plan together and getting things done. And just also, a huge thank you, and I'm proud of my team at Cold Spring for all of the hard work that they have done to make our school improvement plan goals become reality. And I can't wait to share what we have done. And just reaching out to our students and our families too, because as a collective team, we have all done this together during this time. So, our four goals for this plan are goal number one, to continue to develop in the Leader Me process to empower our student leadership and life skills. Goal two, enhance academic achievement for all students in ELA in math and try to decrease the achievement gaps. Goal three, to develop and support the social and emotional health of our students through the Leader Me and Second Step. And goal four is to increase our parent communication and engagement opportunities at Cold Spring. So, when we talk about goal one, the Leader Me process, and our end goal is that we want our students to have goal-setting and to be active participants in their learning and take charge of their academic and educational growth. So, but how do we do that? And in order to do that, we have to start first with our staff and rolling out this process so our students are able to do those things that we want them to do. So, what we have done over the past couple of years, last year and this year, is that we really worked with our staff to roll out this process. The Leader Me is not a program, it's a process. And so, we conducted Leader Me staff meetings once a month, and we work on action teams, and we develop goals for academics, culture, and leadership. And it really nicely ties with our school improvement plan. And we review the progress on these goals. Some goals were able to achieve right away, others take more time to work at and develop. And we work closely with our Franklin Covey coach. So, we continue to implement building-wide goals, and then that is based on student data, and then we then transform that into classroom goals. And then we go down to individual goal-setting for students. So, everyone is goal-setting at Cold Spring. We work closely with our Franklin Covey Leader Me coach, and we just did four different trainings throughout this year. We rotated staff to work with the coach. We did new staff training for those who are new to the Leader Me. So, we're constantly looking at what do we see, what do we want to do, and how are we going to achieve those goals? And then in the morning, we incorporated a morning message, a Leader Me morning message, because our teachers go right into our morning meeting. And with that message, I'm going to show you what that looks like in just a moment. They start their meeting with that question, and that really kicks off the discussion and talking about habits and how the students are really living the habits. Each classroom has leadership roles, and that's for every student. Every student can be a leader, and it's not just something that you do for incentive. Every child takes a leadership role, and they rotate those roles, but they're always working on something. And what we also did, on top of the Cold Spring webpage, we added a link, and we created a Leader Me link webpage so that parents can go and take a look at what do the seven habits look like and take a look at the philosophy, and anyone can look at that. And then last year, right before we closed due to the pandemic, we had a leadership day, which was fantastic, where we opened our doors to the community, and we showed them about the seven habits in the Leader Me and creating mission statements. It was a really fantastic day. I was so proud of the staff and the students. And unfortunately, we couldn't have such an event this year, but what we did instead was that our teachers created videos, and because parents couldn't come in and volunteer and be part of the classroom like they typically would in past years. So, we created videos so they can see where their children are sitting, what did the classroom look like, and still invite them into the walls and doors of Cold Spring. So, when we talk about the Leader Me and also like our school improvement plan, we're looking at different goals. So, through the Leader Me, we look at leadership, culture, and academics. And we look at student behavior, social and emotional readiness of staff and our students, student leadership, family engagement. For our culture, we look at attendance, a supportive school environment, student engagement, and staff satisfaction. And then for academics, we look at their reading and math proficiency, our teaching, and our student-led achievement. And on the right-hand side, you'll see that the rubric, we look at it, are we showing no evidence? Are we doing basic evidence? Are we developing? Are we really mature or are we fully sustaining a goal? And, you know, all our goals are going to be at different places. But if we're at, basically, we work harder and we implement more each year. If we're sustaining, we're going to keep that going. And we want to be at the sustaining part for most of our goals. But as you know, with any goal, we're going to start at the beginning and then keep on going. So, what resources do we use? So, our Leader Me website that we utilize has all kinds of libraries, lessons, vocabulary, morale boosters for student and staff, which all are really important to be able to utilize. And two of our staff members, Stephanie Van Winkle and Rebecca Rosen Trippalotti, they have kind of pooled some of those lessons together to make it easy for our staff to locate. There's so many different things on this website, and our consultant helps us with that as well. And then you can see our habit chat cards. So, this is what I use in the morning. So, for instance, it talks about habit number one, to be proactive. How are you pursuing your dreams and your goals right now? And the paradigm of learning is that it empowers all students to lead their own learning. So, we'll say this message in the morning or a question like that, and then that leads into the morning meeting for classrooms. Then last year, what we did to beautify the building is we created these murals. And these are all front pictures of children's books. And they all have a habit that's part of the meaning of the story. So, whether it's being proactive, or think-win-win, or synergizing, so the meaning in one of these books, you can pick out a habit. So, we decorated all of our walls to kind of remind students through literacy for the Leader Me. So, that leads us into goal number two for academic achievement for ELA in math. So, when we wrote our plan, at the time, we were looking at our MCAS data and that ELA, our students were, 54% were meeting the state expectations, and the math was 44%. But we still were working towards decreasing the gap. So, what did we do to try to work through that, through the lessening the achievement gap? And then now our current situation with, that we've been in the past year with the pandemic, what have we been doing to work towards helping our students achieve? And our great team of teachers have worked very hard this year, and it was a lot of teamwork. So, it continued with our professional development opportunities at grade-level meetings, which are our staff meetings, and then in-service. And we looked at the units of study for ELA and math workshop and our best instructional practices. But on top of that, we conducted grade-level meetings that met before school. And we booked that up for K to 2 and grade 3 to 5. And that's where Stephanie Van Winkle and Rebecca Rosen Trippalotti and a team of teachers really worked together to find common instructional strengths and weaknesses for our students and in their learning. What were they doing really well with, and what did they have some difficulty with? So, our teams reviewed our student performance data and created next steps and interventions. That also then carried over into our professional learning communities, where we look within our curriculum and say, are there any interventions that we can utilize and outline so that our staff know if this is happening, we can use this support? And I'm going to talk a little bit more about this grade-level teamwork in a couple of minutes. Additional, like I mentioned before, we set building-wide reading and math goals. And then our students set their personal goals in the classroom. We continued with our staff with child study meetings to identify interventions to support student needs. And then I have some pictures here of some of incentive programs that we have at Cold Spring. So, we have reading incentive, and so we kind of changed it up a little bit this year. So, what students do they read impenetrably at home? And as they go through different levels, their name gets posted on a bulletin board. So, if you're one level and you read your 300 pages, your name was presented, and we announced it. Our librarian, Lori Ashley, you did a fantastic job. She did videos congratulating students for their readings. So, you can see as students progress, all the reading that they did this year, which was fantastic. We did our One School, One Book last year was Mouse and the Motorcycle, and this year, we did the Tail of Despero, and we transformed Cold Spring into our castle trying to get our students interested and exciting about reading. And then also, we did March Madness, where we looked at picture books. And classrooms read books, and they decided which one they liked, and those books kept them moving forward. We finally had a winner. We did 16 books. And it was really exciting, and the kids really loved it. So, we're trying to get them involved in literacy and independent reading. Now, when we look at our data, and Kelly Batinas and Dr. Lisa White had shared a few weeks ago, the data across the district, and Cold Spring's data really mirrors what they shared. In math, we saw this past winter that we had our students were increased at the above and above benchmark. You know, the numbers went in the right direction for below the benchmark in interventions. And we saw the same in our literacy, that it followed the same pattern, that our numbers had gone down in the wrong directions. So, our teams are really working to figure out what do we need to do, what's our next steps, and create that action plan. So, we went and looked at our team goals. Last year for 2020 for ELA, our students will regularly write about reading, but this year, we really kind of narrowed it down. What is it that we really need to work on? What are we seeing across the grade levels? And so, our teams decided that students' ability to determine the main idea and theme from the text and support it with detail was an area that we really needed to focus on. And for math, we kept the same goal, is for students to explain their thinking in math. And so, we felt we needed to keep that there this year again. So, when we talked about our grade-level teamwork at these grade levels, so they met monthly, they reviewed student performance for both formal and informal assessments. They identified common features in the student performance across a specific grade level or multiple levels. Was this what we're seeing, a concept just solo to one grade level? Or did it go across three, four, and five? If it did, what are we going to do about it? So, that's when our teachers created specific goals for student achievement, and they created the next steps. And they kept track of all of this work in binders so that they know what they did and what was the result, and what we need to do moving forward. So, goal three, to develop the social and emotional health of students through the Leader Me process. So, having students aware of their personal responsibility for both academics and behavior. So, what did we do? So, our staff continued to implement the Second Step lessons and Leader Me lessons in the morning meeting. We infused that morning message. The teachers have access to so many different resources on the Leader Me website. We also incorporated this year with my school adjustment counselor. She did a student book club, a diversity book club. That was a lunch bunch. And that brought students together in first grade to talk about new ideas and experiences and taking personal perspectives. And then we continued to work on the child study process and then continued to work with Leader Me in infusing staff boosters. Not only do we need to do boosters for our children, but also for our staff to create that mindfulness and knowing what do we need to do and how do we need to do it, but work together as a team to get there and support each other. So, when I talk about working with the consultant, so when we do meet with her, we have an outline that we follow. What is our end in mind for the day? What are we looking to achieve? And then how are we going to do it? And so, when we meet with her, we have action planning forms. So, see, do, and get, that's our cycle that we work on. So, what are the results that we want to get, and how are we going to get that? And what are the measurable results that we need to look for? And then what's the steps and what we're going to do? So this is what it kind of looks like, our planning form with a consultant. And then, um, goal four is to increase parent communication and engagement. So this year definitely, we really needed to work hard to bring our school together, especially when we couldn't be together. So we offered, um, through my school psychologist and my adjustment counselor and myself, coffee hour for parents. Um, we first did it in person before we had to transition into virtual, um, end of last year and into this year. We talked about social emotional health. They just did something with bullying. We talked about curriculum initiatives. So those were brought to families. And then through our council, uh, great discussions that always happen with this group. Um, but Rick Kudmore had brought up a fantastic idea. It's like, how can we create a, uh, forum for parents to talk about parenting? Or things that are really important to them? And so we came up with this idea at the very end of last year. And then we went into, um, you know, the virtual world. So we didn't get to get it off the ground like we wanted to. But this year we tried it again and we did it virtually. So we partnered with the health services group. And we, they did a really good job. This year they ran a program called Parenting During COVID. Um, they connected the parents with family, uh, community resources. Um, and it was really a great discussion group that's going to keep on going, which is fantastic. So that was awesome. And we continue to do, use the Facebook and Smore to update our families, uh, weekly. But you know, last year, one of our goals was before the pandemic had hit, is like to do the flip classroom. And that kind of really forced us into actually having to do this. So but by doing that, our families really have become engaged in the learning. They had to be a teacher at home, um, along with the teacher in school. And we looked at, um, instruction differently. The relationships were different. So how do we create such a strong bond now with family in school? Which it was a positive thing that really has come out of this. And then, um, in order to keep our kids connected to school and doing fun, we ran a lot of virtual family fun nights. And we continue to do that. We just had the paint night. We've done bingo. We've had sing-alongs. I mean, it was, that's been great to see the kids together, just come together as community. As always, we do our leadership days and hopefully we'll do that again next year. When we surveyed our families, oh, um, this past year, what do you want us to have us do more parent nights about? And you know, online learning was right up there. Um, literacy and math, you know, followed by homework and technology. I mean, there's a lot of information right here on the screen that we can do a lot with our families. And I think we're all in the online learning. We were all forced into that this year. And I think everyone's sort of done a fantastic job with that. And so as I mentioned before, this is just a couple of pictures of the, um, website links that we have, the leader in me. So if you want to go on and take a look about, um, the seven habits, you can do that. And then also welcome to Cold Spring. And then, um, our leadership day that we had last year. And we're looking forward to doing that again in the future. So I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Hey, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments from Mrs. Morgan? No, you did a great job. No questions. That's a good sign, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything you're doing. All right. Next up, we have Hedge Elementary School and Principal Kristen Wilson. Hello, Mrs. Wilson. How are you?
There we go. I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Good. Let me just get this going for you all. Great. Um, thank you for having me here this evening. Um, thank you, Chris, for leading ahead of me. Now I have to, um, follow you. It's a hard act to follow. You did a wonderful job. Um, so I wanted to open this up, just to start, this is my eighth year at Hedge Elementary School. And we set a theme for this school year. We picked the he, the theme of be, being a superhero. And it's twofold. One is we connected the superhero theme into our PBIS program. And we created the acronym of hero, being helpful, empathetic, resilient, and own it. Which own it is, we tried to connect responsibility in there. So own it was, it worked with the O. So owning your own behavior and your actions. Um, we, we got this idea from a text that, uh, our leadership team had done at an academy we attended, written by Cornelius Minor. Um, he wrote a book called We, We Got This. And he uses the superhero theme, um, connecting teachers as, and educators as superheroes and working to better the community through, um, their students and being able to reach all learners in a culturally responsive, um, community. Um, so we connected the two together. And as I go through the goals, I will describe a little bit more on how we did that. So our school improvement plan is written by our fabulous school council. Uh, this year we, uh, have three parent members, Mrs. Wright, Mrs. Dayhe, and Mrs. Berset. We also have a faithful community member, Mr. Jimmy Ma, and two teachers, a grade four teacher, Mrs. Manfredi, and a moderate special needs teacher, Mrs. Greenwood, and then myself. They're not too sad that they don't have to present tonight. I'll tell you that. I always like to start, oops, I always like to start by introducing, um, our students to, to the school committee members. We have a hundred and eighty students currently enrolled at Hedge School. Hundred and sixty-eight of those students are attending full-time in person and twelve are in our remote academy. We have ten classrooms this year in, for grades K through five. We have one section of fourth grade, one section of first grade, and two sections of the remaining grades. Um, we have fifty staff members and twenty-three of those staff members are full-time. So we have a lot of part-time staff members that work in our little school. Thirty-four point eight percent of our students', um, English is their second language. And twenty-six percent of our students receive English language instruction. Uh, we also have, um, sixty-two point five percent of our students are economically disadvantaged, which is up from forty-three percent last year. Um, uh, this data is based on our October first data that we submit to the state. Um, so here with students with disability, we have seventeen point four percent. And our high needs population is at seventy-six percent. Um, so what that means is our high needs students, um, have our, meet one of four criteria. They're either on an IP, they're an English language learner, or a former English language learner, um, or they are identified as economically disadvantaged. So our first goal that I'd like to go over tonight is to increase academic achievement for all learners through the implementation of universally designed instruction. Um, I, we didn't take MCAS, and MCAS was one of our measurable components for this school. But I did want to share with you where we were at in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand, um, when we took the last MCAS. Um, so this data here shows, um, our average scaled score. And, um, we were doing very well in, in ELA. We were very close to meeting the state average. And in math, we were getting close as well. So what we did for the first few years that I was part of Hedge Schools, we worked really hard on creating a response to intervention plan, um, to try to, I use our district data to identify the students that might need a little bit more support in providing interventions to help those students. So we created our TI protocols. We have forms that we fill out to track student progress. We have scheduled times where students and teacher, uh, teachers can meet together to talk about student learning and discuss their interventions. And, and they have to track the times that they've met with students so we can, uh, identify the fidelity of the intervention. And then if students aren't making progress, we refer them to our child study team. And the child study team might come in and change that intervention. Um, or they might refer them to testing. Um, or they might, um, do other resources, uh, connect the student and families to other resources. It's all based on the student's need. Um, so we spent a lot of time doing that. And then we wanted to look at, well, we have all these students that are new English language learners that, um, are still learning English. And they also need to be accessing the general education curriculum. So you might have a fifth grader coming into our school who, um, is not reading English at the time, but they still need to be exposed and access the fifth grade content. And so we needed to really go out and search for strategies and skills to be able to do that as educators. So fortunately, we were invited to attend the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's UDL Academy. And we created a team of teachers to work together with that academy for three years. So we committed to a three-year goal to work on, um, universally designed instruction. And so what that is, is that is looking at these three principles that have all kinds of, um, ideas and suggestions in there, um, that represent different components of the brain to help, um, acquire language, um, help acquire learning and, or in, and engage. So first, we want to engage our students. So how do we engage our students? How do we represent the learning so that students can understand it? And then how can they demonstrate their learning to us or express their learning to us? So those are the three principles that a lot of our work, um, has, has gone into. Um, our book club this year, the Cornelius Minor We Got This Book Club, really looks at, looking at each individual learner, identifying their barriers. So what makes it tricky for them to learn the information? Um, looking at their behavior. Um, it could be behavior that you can see acting out, or maybe behavior that you can't see. Maybe they're, they're turning in. Identifying how you can, um, provide opportunities for them to be able to engage in that learning and how you can get them to share their knowledge. And so right before we closed in the pandemic, we had been spending a lot of time, um, on these practices. And technology is a great resource, um, to be able to do this work. So we had been utilizing the Google platform for a lot of the translation tools, speech to text, videos. Our teachers had been working with Flipgrid to be able to record videos that they could present to students ahead of time. There's, um, different options where you can, uh, record a video and you can have it present in a language of your choice so that our students can, um, can read. If they're reading in their native language, they can, they can read the videos. So we had been doing all this work and then we shut down. Um, and it was, our teachers were fortunate where they had been using a lot of this technology already. So then when we shut down and we had to introduce it to home, they were able to jump right in, in, and get going. And they worked fabulous, um, as grade level teams to be able to get those lesson templates out, um, every week. It was very impressive to see them work together. So through this year, our biggest goal to, to work on UDL was the book study. It framed our, our work as a school. And we had two options for teachers. One option was, um, a four. Uh, they were able to use a P, PLC book club time. So they had four days where they met and they did some very deep discussions on the text. And then we also, it wasn't really an option. It was required. Part of our fa, all of our faculty meetings, uh, focused around the text. So I gave teachers time to read little excerpts of the text. And then we discussed them during our faculty meeting. They were organized so that our PLC book club met right before the faculty meeting. So the book club people were, um, were very, um, had practiced and talked about the concepts that we were going to be discussing as a greater, uh, staff. In the book, Cornelius, um, created different templates and activities for staff or teachers to, to do. And so part of the book club was to do some of those activities and then discuss them. A lot of teachers used, um, this, the book club as one of their professional goals. Um, and it's been very successful for us this year. And we're really excited. I'm really excited to show you the next slide. Um, because we were very nervous when our students came back to us of, of where that slide would be. So although we had a lot of students that were able to continue doing, doing the home learning during the, um, school closure, we did have a lot of students that were, had, found it difficult to access the home learning, variety of reasons. We had a lot of working families that couldn't be home with their kids. Um, we had technology challenges. Um, but we, so we were nervous on, on where our students were going to be when they came in to us. Um, so this is our benchmark data from the fall, based on the Founces and Penel Benchmark Assessment System for grades one through five. Since we don't assess kindergarten in the fall, in this slide, I just include grades one through five. I mean, so this shows us our data. Um, blue meaning exceeding, green is they're at the grade level standard, yellow is they're almost there, and then red is they're, they're below. So we do have a lot of red, um, which is concerning. We always have to keep in mind that our, our English language learners are still not only learning how to speak the language, but they also have to learn how to read and write the language. And I don't know for you, but I took Spanish in high school and college, and I even took a little bit after. And I am not fluent in Spanish at all. And I can read Spanish very eloquently, um, but I some, I don't know what I'm always reading. I can, it sounds good, but I don't know what I'm reading. Um, so we have to keep in mind that it's going to take our students' time to be able to develop those language skills, to be able to catch up to their English-speaking spirits, uh, peers. So although they might be, we have, might have a high percentage of students that are not at grade level, we have to closely monitor their growth, and they are definitely growing. One of the big pieces we wanted to work on with this school improvement plan, like I mentioned before, is having students access that grade level material. So we want the students that are also accessing the grade level t, material to really soar and achieve. So this data really shows that we are also helping the students, but we're also helping them go above and beyond. So when you look at, oops, sorry. When you look at our, um, students that exceeded, this is our fall data. And then when we looked at our January data, we had an increasing number of students that are now above grade level. Um, so we were excited to, to see that growth with, um, a group of our students. These are our kindergarten kiddos from January. So we have sixty-nine percent of our students, sorry, it looks like there might be a delay in your screen. Can you see the pie chart?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, so here is our kindergarten dat, data. They're really on a good trajectory for learning their, uh, reading skills so far for the year. And this is our star math data. Um, in the beginning of the year, we were at, um, our average scaled score for students in grades one through five was four forty-nine. And we have jumped up to five oh eight. Um, so we're, we're still plugging away to, to get up to our, our district average. But we were very, very pleased with the increase in the average scaled score for our students. Our second goal was to increase social emotional learning by following the principles of the responsive classroom approach. So whereas Cold Spring, um, is using the leader in me, we're using the responsive classroom approach, which has several core beliefs that we follow. Uh, looking at social emotional competencies and also academic competencies, knowing that both go it together to be able to learn material. Um, we also incorporate our PBIS into the, um, into this goal. And part of this also includes our commitment to the second step curriculum, which is our social emotional curriculum for the district. So as I said before, we embraced our superhero theme throughout the school year. And our PBIS program, um, is in which we, the kids earn hedge kid tickets for demonstrating behavior of a hedge school kid. And it's respect, responsibility, and safety. And then we threw in our little acronym of hero, and we have empathy, um, resiliency, and being helpful. And so they earn tickets. Of course, we had cohort A and cohort B in the beginning of the year. And now I'm pleased to say we don't have cohort A and cohort B. They're all together. Um, and what we do is we have a whole school meeting that we ho, hold monthly. And that's part of the responsive classroom, uh, pro, uh, classroom program is to, um, conduct whole school meetings, um, frequently. And we also conduct them in the classroom, which I'll get into in a minute. Um, but during our whole school meetings, which we were able to do virtually, which was great because parents were able to join in. And typically they're held in the school and parents weren't able, aren't able to participate in those. But during those meetings, we celebrate the successes of students. And so students are always able to share out to the whole group, um, something that they're proud of and would like to celebrate. And then staff can also share things that they would like to celebrate. We always have announcements of things that are coming up. We celebrate birthdays and then we have a lesson. And the lesson revolves around our theme for the year. And then after we have our lesson, we get to pick prizes based on the hedge kid tickets. So we moved last year from doing physical prizes to experiences. So one of our goals is to connect children with positive role models and adults in their community. So teachers volunteer their time to do an experience with a child once or twice a year. And so this, on this slide that we have up here, we had someone gave up some time to do yoga with the students or do a craft with the students. We had someone do a relay races with the students and then we actually had two people do crafts this month. And so it's really fun. The kids look forward it. They look forward to seeing if they win. And we try to make sure that everyone has at least one experience throughout the year. So thinking about the responsive classroom, we had scheduled to have someone come out and do a refresher for our staff over the summer, but we had to cancel that. So we're hoping to be able to do that this summer. Responsive Classroom has moved everything to virtual options. So those are available for staff if they choose to do that. We had trained most of our staff with the initial and advanced course in responsive classroom. So we have some new staff that we still need to send. Again, we had planned to send some folks last year, but we were, we had to cancel that. So we're hoping to be able to do that again. But at the beginning of this year, we spent a lot of time figuring out how to do the responsive classroom morning meeting in a virtual environment, as well as a socially distanced environment. So the morning meeting, the responsive classroom morning meeting is divided up into four components. It has a greeting, a message, an activity and a share. And so we came together in September and we practiced different activities. We made a list of different games that would work in the type of environment that we were going to be instructing in. And we got, we got ready to do that. And our teachers are fabulous at it. They are able to do a morning meeting virtually and they're very creative in the different ways that they've been able to implement that in the hybrid world, in the socially distanced world as well. We also develop hopes and dreams for each individual child and for the school as well. We, every classroom has a take a break spot. We use the same language throughout the building. So as students move through the different grade levels, they know the same language. If a teacher was, would say to them, take a break, they know what that means. And the take a break spot has things that would help them calm down. Some messages for inspiration to change their mindset and get them ready to learn. We also instill quiet time into our practice. Every classroom holds a quiet time after the recess lunch period, where we literally are just quiet for about five minutes. We play quiet music. There's quiet activities that the children can do. They choose to put their head down and do some breathing. That's what they can do. But we just really are trying to teach our children just to quiet their minds and get their bodies and their minds ready for learning for the rest of the day. We also review all of the rules. Actually, the classroom rules are developed together as a group. So we review that we establish those rules and then the teachers create routines and practice those routines with the students. It's a big piece of responsive classroom that the term is used, interactive modeling, where the teachers have a practice to roll out routines, where they demonstrate it. They have a student demonstrate it and then they all practice that routine individually. When this goal, then one of the measurable pieces for this goal was to look at our office referrals. And this time last year, I pulled this data last week for this goal. And last year, from September to March thirteenth, when we closed, we had a hundred and seventeen office referrals. And this year, at the same time, we had nineteen, which I really feel is a statement because the students were so, they were six feet apart. They, there weren't as many social interactions that they could have as they did before. Since we've been back full time, there's been a little uptake on that. But the goal is to reduce those office referrals and we have seen a decrease in that. This is a superhero day that we did in the fall to celebrate our theme. We worked with the PTA. We had done a lesson during one of our whole school meetings on being a hero. And so we sent home these bags in this little coloring sheet for the kids to demonstrate how they could be a hero. And they decorated them at home on remote Monday and then they brought them in on their day for superhero day. And since we were in the hybrid model, we had two days cohort A and cohort B because we did everything twice in the hybrid world. And PTA created signs for us for inspiration and different ways that they could be a superhero. And they were able to get tokens to help remind them of whatever the messages said. And then everyone got to dress up as their own superhero. And we were able to go around the school and socially distance, be able to collect and see the signs and the tokens throughout the school. It was really a fun, fun day for all of us. And the PTA did a fabulous job putting it together. They were so excited to do something for us because for so long, they couldn't, they couldn't do much. So it was great to work with them again. Our third goal was to increase parent and community engagement through varied opportunities. So during the school closure, our parents had lots of engagement because they were working with the students on a regular basis. But we still tried to do some fun activities for the kids, for community activities. We were able to hold a virtual field day during the school closure. We had our PE teacher put together some really exciting activities that the kids could do at home with videos that he recorded himself doing. We got T-shirts for the children and they were able to share videos of themselves doing the activities at home. So for some of our families that had a lot of children, like the picture that I show here, they had a really good time. It was fun to be able to do that for our kids. We also had, were able to hold a virtual Big Shaboozie celebration, which is where we celebrate the students as they were learning their multiplication facts in third grade. And we also were able to do a grade five drive-by celebration. So we kept that going. And then in the fall, we, we were able to do our character contest with our pumpkin character contest. And we were able as a school to, we couldn't do our holiday sing-along, but we were able to play holiday bingo. So instead of everyone singing the music, we played the music. And they got to find those music titles on their bingo board. And we also were very sad not to be able to hold our annual hedge school Thanksgiving feast, but instead we had a pizza party. So of course, we had it twice cohort A and cohort B were able to have their pizza parties. And we were, we were able to do some fun activities virtually in the, in the school. So we were able to have our stories and performances. I found a great book to tie in with our theme, written by Vice President Kamala Harris, titled Superheroes Are Everywhere. And we were able to take the superhero pledge as a school, which is in that, that text. Here are some pictures of our drive-up grade five promotion that we did last fall. It was really fun and we hadn't seen the kids for so long. So it was just so fun to be able to see our fifth graders for one last time before we sent them off to the middle school. And our final goal is goal number four, to increase opportunities for staff and student leadership. Before the school closure last year, we had implemented this pineapple chart, which is over here in the corner. And what we did is the leadership team developed a questionnaire and we were able to identify areas of instruction that teachers were looking for some new ideas. And we sent that out to the school community and we said, hey, if you, if you feel this is an area that you feel, feel that you could share some ideas, would you open your classroom up to have visitors? So teachers volunteered to have people come visit their classroom on certain days, certain times to see certain things. And then other teachers signed up to be able to go and visit their classrooms. One thing that we asked our visitors is that if they would email the teacher that they saw to provide something positive or some, an outcome that they, they were able to gain from their visit. We found it to be very successful and people really enjoyed it. We haven't been able to do that with the school closure right now. It's just been really tricky with schedules. And we're hoping to be able to implement the chart next year, but we do have an open door policy where if somebody is looking for something, I will coordinate a visit for them. And we've been able to do that for a couple of teachers that are trying to seek some ideas. So thinking that we have leaders within our building that can help each other. We also have two teachers that were trained by the UDL Academy to teach a graduate level course in UDL. And we're hoping to be able to do that within the upcoming school year. One of our most exciting pieces of this goal was to reestablish our peer leadership program. And we were able to do this last year and then this year it's really taken off. So last year, Ms. Tessitore is our, our peer leader advisor. And she, we work with our grade five students. And we have a small group of grade five students, but we have a very strong group of grade five students this year. They're very passionate about the work that they're doing. The first thing students do is they have to apply to become a peer leader and they're interviewed by Ms. Tessitore and they have to have a recommendation from their classroom teacher to be a peer leader. Once they become a peer leader, at any time, if they present behavior that is not exhibit the qualities of a peer leader, they will be asked to step down. The first thing that Ms. Tessitore does when she has her group of peer leaders is she matches them with other students or other classes to, to help and be a peer role model. So we have fifth graders that go into kindergarten during their free playtime and help, help play with them or help encourage language. We also have grade five students that go and help during transition times. We have them going into second grade classrooms to read with students or to help support writing. It was a little tricky with the social distancing practices, but we were able to make it happen. Our peer leaders are very responsible and they take their job seriously and they're following all the protocols that they're supposed to follow. And we have a schedule so we know when they're coming in and out of other, other classrooms. The peer leaders have connected with the Sunrise Rotary Club to create an early act club. And this is really exciting. Last year, we were able to have an induction ceremony where the children were inducted into the early act club. We're hoping to be able to do that now. It's going to be a little different because we'll have to do it virtually with our families at home. But part of early act is that the students work to do activities that, one, for three different areas. One, to better the school, better the community and better the world. And they've worked really hard this year. They were able to have a hat day where kids could donate money to wear hats in school and they were able to give money to the Children's Hospital of Boston. We had a day where they could purchase carnation flowers around Valentine's Day as a carnation gram and be able, and that money went to a local animal shelter. It was a big hit, lots of flowers in our building that day. And then the most recent activity that they did was they collaborated with Martha, Martha's Bikes in North Plymouth, which donated two bikes to our school and they did a bike raffle. And all of the money that they earned went to feed the homeless in Plymouth. And part of early acts mission with the younger children is to really see their efforts from beginning to end, to bring it full circle. So what we did is we were able to bring the children to Perry's Market, where they were able to pick up the food that they were going to deliver to the homeless shelter. So they went to Perry's, they picked up their food and then they drove to the homeless shelter and they delivered the food to the leader that was going to distribute the food to the members. So it was, it was a great activity. And one of our fifth graders told us it was the best, told us it was the best field trip she had ever been on. So here's just a big thank you from some of our superheroes that me and the office and the health office so far this year. And going with Cornelius's theme, we put some, we beautified our school as well. I don't have a lot of, I don't have pictures up, but one of the ones that we put up was PS You Got This. The title of the book that we had this year is You Got This. And we have that going down into our staff lounge to remind our, our teachers of the work that they're doing and that through this hard time of the pandemic, they really are going to be okay. And they've worked fabulous to make it happen for our kids this year. But we did put some wall signs up throughout the building to, to create some, some positive statements. I just wanted to thank our, our school community. Our, our PTA has been wonderful. Our school council's been wonderful on, on trying to, to help us with everything that we need. But our custodians have been fabulous. A lot of the work they had to do quickly, moving furniture, setting up classrooms, being creative. They've worked really hard and, and they really deserve a lot to help us reopen this school. So thank you, Dan and Tyler. And that's, that's all I have for everyone tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Great, thank you so much. Does anybody have anything, any questions or comments for Mrs. Wilson? No? Great. Good job. No, Ms. first, did you have something? Oh, okay. Yeah, good job. Thank you so much for all your hard work. We appreciate it and your staff as well. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, we have our district pandemic update. Dr. Campbell.
Yeah, the title of that. Yeah, so just an update in terms of how we, how we're dealing with the COVID situations since we last met. So as of the end of last week, we had twenty-seven students confirmed with COVID-19 and eighty-seven in quarantine. Twenty-two of those were due to in-school exposure. Again, the new definitions of close contact, not the new definitions, but our new parameters around close contact. Sixty-five of those eighty-seven were exposure outside of school for quarantine. So in terms of employees, we had two that were due to exposure outside of school and two that were quarantined due to school exposure. And the number of employees that were quarantined due to exposure outside of school was at ten. We did see a considerable uptick in COVID cases among our younger students last week. Very different than what we've seen in past weeks. Again, for the majority of cases reported though, we can trace these cases to household transmissions overwhelmingly. But we have seen an increase in elementary. But they continue to do a remarkable job back at the schools. I did mention to the committee before, as I communicated to you, one of our classrooms at an elementary school had several COVID cases that arose last week. It seemed from the information that was coming to us, that several of them were connected to a gathering of students outside of school. However, we also had several parents that chose to quarantine their children as a result of that. They weren't, they weren't deemed necessarily close contacts by the, by the parameters that we would have, but they just took the abundance of caution and did that themselves. Principal communicated the situation to families and the teachers. The teacher is actually facilitating instruction remotely. So we got to a point and they had communicated this, but I wanted to publicly say, we got to a point in this particular classroom, given the amount of cases that we had because of the situation, as well as the choice of some of the families to quarantine and other students that had to quarantine due to be in close contacts, that it made more sense educationally for this particular cohort to go remotely for the time being. So that's been going, the teacher's been doing that and that's been going smoothly since. And that was communicated last week. It's also important though for people to know that in this particular situation, the classroom has been at six feet. So this, this, this particular case has nothing to do with, with the students coming into closer contact with each other because they've been maintaining six feet in this particular classroom. So it has nothing to do with being closer to one another. In terms of COVID surveillance testing, just like we did in February break, we are just a reminder that COVID tests are available to any and all staff and students this week. Families may pick up a test kit any day this week during school office hours. We'll continue to communicate that out and encourage anyone that is interested in participating in that surveillance opportunity to do so. We have the COVID tests available. In terms of vaccinations, I feel that we've made great progress with vaccinations of our staff between the state's dedicated vaccine days behind us, which just ended, I think yesterday was the last one, if I'm not mistaken. Along with the availability of additional, additional vaccines that have been made available to us from Kingston Med Spa, the Marshfield Fairgrounds. It seems, in my opinion, at this point, every member of our district faculty and staff that had been seeking a vaccine had the opportunity to do so, at least partially at this time. So the latest data, Dr. Puff, and I always go to him for a source of data when it comes to a lot of things. But in terms of vaccinations, this was the sixth, I believe he gave me this information. The latest data from Plymouth vaccinations, we're talking about the town. The latest data from Plymouth vaccinations, we're talking about the town, that extracted from the state's weekly vaccine report from last Thursday evening, shows that 24% of our residents are now fully vaccinated. The 75-plus age group is now 69% fully vaccinated, while those 65 to 74 are 54% fully vaccinated. We are seeing, geez, I thought I could see this chart, but, you know, overall, I think 14% of our 30 to 49-year-olds, 25% of our 50 to 64-year-olds, and 11% of our 20 to 29-year-olds are fully vaccinated, and then a small percentage of 0 to 19. So it's encouraging that we're, we're seeing that. So I just wanted to share that information, which is shared with me by Dr. Puffin. And the last thing I want to say regarding COVID matters and anything that's of concern is just again to strongly encourage our public, strongly encourage any families that have any concerns, please, you know, I, I would encourage you to reach out directly, reach out to me, reach out to my administrative team, reach out to your child's principal if you have any concerns about any matters, whether it has to do with the way the desks are distributed in classrooms, congestion in schools, any matter, rather than, you know, keeping that to yourself and not sharing it with the school community, I just encourage you to reach out to us directly. We certainly will address all matters or any concerns, sort of dispel any concerns you have by actually giving you, you know, direct evidence of, of what we know is going on. I had the pleasure of being at Plymouth North High School at the end of the day and just saw a great transition, and I can talk about that in my, my general update as well. But I just want to encourage the public to always, please, reach out. We're always available for a conversation to, to, if there are any concerns that anyone has.
Great. Do we have any questions? And for Dr. Campbell regarding? No? Can I ask a quick question? Do we have numbers of students that decided to go full remote?
From the high schools?
Yeah, or, or in general, that were hybrid, that went full remote instead of going full in-person?
We may have had a couple at the middle school level, and we had none at the high school.
None at the high school?
Zero. I know our initial survey suggested we could have had as many upwards of 60 to 65. We had none that chose that.
All right. I have another quick question if nobody else does. I know Karen had mentioned, and I, I was really happy to hear that, that there's a student support system for students that, for their comfortability level, and I know that was one of my biggest concerns last time, so I'm really happy to hear about that. And just so that Karen knows too, and Alexandra, in the future, I'd love to keep hearing about how that's going, so thank you.
And I'm glad that Karen reported that out too, and I think Alex would also agree that we, you know, we, we really are concerned about our kids and their emotional, not just their academic well-being, but their social, emotional well-being. And everyone has different concerns and different, you know, responses to decisions that are made, and it's really important that we engage our students in a way that's going to help them with the situation that they're experiencing. And it's going to vary from student to student, so we definitely have systems in place, and we're always available, not only to our, our family communities, but to our students, first and foremost, who are walking in the doors every day, to support them in any way that they have, whether it's a formal process or an informal, impromptu opportunity. We always want them to feel comfortable that there's at least one adult that they can go to, to, to get support. It's really important.
And it validates their concerns, which I think is really important, too. Did any, Mr. Pizzano?
Two, two questions. These both came from messages I got from families in the district. One was, I'm getting mixed, very mixed reports on what bus seating, what's the official protocol for buses? Is it all signed? Is it varied by school or by school level?
Bus seat assignment should be assigned, and I know that Mr. Brothers has been working with First Student on this particular issue regarding bus assignments, but every student should have an assigned seat. Can you speak to this?
Yes, and I actually just got that yesterday, just got that Monday officially, First Student, all elementary levels, and we're trying, we're trying to change the, the way we processed it. Elementary took too long, First Student admitted it, we admitted it. At the high school level, what we're doing now is we have the ability through our TransFinder, which is our routing system, to pull the kids in the order they're picked up, and the goal is when they get on the bus in the morning, they start in the back and they work their way to the front. So everyone has an assigned seat that way, and it will not take as long to get a certified list of where kids are sitting at the high school level as it did the elementary. But as of yesterday, excuse me, as of today, this morning, I did get the official list with all students assigned at the elementary level, and again, high school should be assigned as of this morning.
All right. So is it still a working process, or as far as you know, it should be, I mean, what I'm hearing is?
It's, it's good now.
Yeah.
It's good now. It was broken before, but we're, we fixed it, and it's, it's set now.
Okay. We'll wait and see if we get more reports of, because it, it seems like, I think part of the issue is adherence, you know, it seems like, you know, there's too much variability from bus to bus, you know, depending on how much a particular bus driver wants to enforce it. So I think there's, like I said, I'm sure in some cases it's being adhered to very well, but I've definitely gotten, you know, reports from some parents that are very concerned about, you know, kind of being a free role.
Yeah, and that's important, and we've reiterated, both myself and Mr. Brothers, just how important it is not only to have it consistent in each bus, but the, the enforcement is critically important as well. Not just once it's established, but moving forward to make sure that students, and we do have students that will come, come and go to that, but they really need to be very particular about where they're sitting and being consistent with that.
All right, so I guess we'll hope, I guess if parents see an issue, they should let us know.
They absolutely, yep.
And just add on to that, one more piece to add on to that is, I mean, both, I think we all have to acknowledge, though, it's a lot of the kids, some of it's the first time going on the bus, so we're going to get over, it's like starting school over again. It's sometimes tough for some students to get back on, especially at the elementary level. That behaviors are still kind of relearning the bus again, just like we are coming back to school, so we'll definitely work that out, though.
And as things work out, we can also validate everything, because we have six cameras on every bus, so we know exactly where every student is, we can see them, we have high-def audio and video, so, you know, from time to time, even in typical years, issues arise on the bus, so we, we, we pull that in, in, as well.
All right. My other question was regard to desk spacing. My understanding was it's supposed to be measured edge to edge, but I'm hearing very mixture.
It is, I can tell you, and I can also.
And I'm seeing very pictures that are very concerning, that don't seem to hear that, and I even had a report from my own, one of my own children that seemed to contradict that, so what is the official?
It is officially, and it's in the DESI guidelines, it is edge of chair to edge of chair, not desk.
Edge of chair, edge of chair.
Yep, and it's in the, it's in the actual Department of Education Facilities Guidelines, and they have an illustration of that. I can forward that to you, Mr. Pizzano, if it would help. We've been inundated with guidance over the course of the year, but it.
Edge of chair, that's why I'm more concerned with the, how strictly it's being applied, because certain pictures are saying, don't see that they would, that there's possibly three feet between chairs, but I could be wrong.
Okay, and, and though, I can tell you that, well, I can certainly look into that. Any particular concerns, we, we, this is something that needs to be reviewed nightly because chairs can slide as well, and we have to make sure of that, but I can assure you that in every situation that the principals went around and reviewed it room by room, the teachers, the desks were, 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 as many of our principals can attest, spoke to, the desks were delivered by the custodians, the teachers have the opportunity to set up the classroom to maximize the space between students, given their largest cohort, so some classes may have as little as eight to 10 kids in it, depending on the course section, some might have 20, as I think Karen mentioned. In cases where they were too large, we've had classes that have been shifted to the, the lecture hall to try to maximize space as well. But this is something, just like every protocol that we've had in place since the beginning of the year, just because we, we've put it in place, doesn't mean that we stop relaxing. We have to just be very vigilant with, you know, checking that every night, making sure that we're doing everything that we said, and just reminding individuals, teachers, students, administrators, everyone to keep doing what we're, we're called to do in this situation.
No, that clarification definitely helps. I know there was definitely varying ideas among the, you know, family populations, or at least knowing that it's supposed to be seat to seat, at least, because.
Yes, the edge of seat, edge of seat.
Having consistent understanding.
And there's been lots of, I've heard that all over the Commonwealth, different opinions about that, and at one point, the commissioner actually misspoke and said center of, center of center. But the guidance is very specific in, in the DESI guidelines, and they have illustrations that actually show different configurations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else have anything? All good? All right, next, superintendent's report.
Yeah, so just a general report. So today began our full return of secondary students, so our middle school and high school students all returned today to join their classmates. I did have the opportunity to visit Plymouth North High School, connected with administration from all four elementary schools, had an opportunity to, to witness dismissal and, and walk some of the transitions there myself as well. Overall, very positive first day, even asked, pulled a few kids aside as they were leaving, asking how their day was, and, you know, I know that you have, you know, an adult and administrator asking you those questions, but some very enthusiastic, it was, it was a good day, can't wait to come back tomorrow, more than one occasion, which was really nice. All reports from administration, arrivals and dismissals went as smoothly as we could hope for, lots of positive energy and excitement. At South Middle School specifically, we moved the, the parking for teachers to the side lot, which really opened it up for parent pickups. So just some of the adjustments that we made in preparation for this really helped with some of the logistics. So we had a few tardy seniors, it was reported to me, but overall, things went very well, attendance was very high. I just want to thank our entire faculty, our staff, our administrators, our students for making this possible, because it's really the collective effort of everyone to make sure that we're, we're doing this and we're doing it well. So thank you to everyone, and we have to keep being vigilant, as I said, with this. But it's so, it's so nice to see everyone together. Our virtual town meeting took place on Saturday, the third. Attendance of the meeting members was at a record high. Several of our North High School students volunteered to support a few of our town meeting members from the library of Plymouth North High School, so I really want to thank them for supporting our town meeting members with the technical challenges that they may have had. They did a wonderful job. The virtual session was a success, and we actually finished earlier than I anticipated. I think we were done by 2:30, if I'm not mistaken. Our budget was approved, as well as a reserve account for the school department to access in the event that we're not able to cover our personnel expenses after exhausting other stimulus money that's available. You know, so my central leadership team will be meeting to discuss what we know about in terms of ESTR-2 funds. We're also waiting to hear more specifics around ESTR-3, there's still, there's still some things we don't know in terms of the, you know, how that will be distributed and the exact dollars for that, but more information should be coming soon. I'll be sure to report back to, to, to this committee when more information comes our way, but overall, very successful town meeting. I've had the pleasure of visiting several of our elementary schools since we last met. It's, you know, it's really been nice to hear the life and energy back in the schools. I think you heard one of our principals talking about how the behaviors may be back to a degree, but our, our students, just, it, just the energy and enthusiasm has been great. And the weather has been very nice as well, and, and the teachers continue to use the outdoor space for a variety of activities and educational opportunities, no matter which school I go to, which is wonderful to see. So administratively, we've discussed this in terms of like some of the silver linings to this pandemic, and I think this is one of them, is the availability and the use of outdoor space. So not only this year, we've been very fortunate, really fortunate for the weather, but just thinking long-term about, I, I do anticipate seeing teachers that want to take their kids out for educational experiences outside. The students seem to be more grounded and centered when they're working, it, it adds, you know, an element of relaxation to the students, so I've seen a lot of benefits from it. So it's something that, you know, I've mentioned that we should probably try to invest and see what we can do to support some of the structures, perhaps, that would be available in, in some of our schools for the outdoor use, so just something to think about. And then lastly, April enrichment week, the week of April break, just like we had our, our February break. Educational opportunities, students in grades two to 12 are invited to join us on April vacation for a, a number of fun workshops that will be taking place. Again, they're offered free to any Plymouth Public School student, grades two to 12. This time, the opportunities are, space is limited. I don't know if it's still open, Dr. Rogers, or if we've closed out yet, but.
We have a few courses that are still open.
Few courses still open, so we just encourage people, you can go right on our website, and, and the information's right there to register. We ask that you call in, it just helps with the process. Much more to call Dr. Rogers, one of her administrative assistants, with that, but I think there were 11 courses. There are three-hour sessions, either in the morning, in the afternoon, and again, just go to our website, but just really happy that we have families that are really interested in that and students that have taken part of that. So that's all I have this evening, Ms. Saber.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Campbell? No? Okay, great, thank you. Retirements and announcements, Mr. Chofee.
Oh yes, good evening. We have two retirements to share with you this evening. William Scott Armstrong is a physical education teacher with 22 years of service in Plymouth Public Schools, and he was at PCIS, and he will be with us till the end of this year. And then we also lost a head custodian at Manomet, it was his most recent position, over 33 years of service, and it is Donald Lee Babin, and he retired effective April 15th, or will be retiring effective April 15th, so we had the two retirements this evening.
Great, Ms. Badger?
Wonderful. On behalf of the Plymouth Public Schools, I'd like to thank these two individuals for their combined 55 years of service to the district and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the superintendent's end-of-year goals update.
Thank you, I need to put my glasses on for this one. I've been trying to read this, and it just, I, I, the masks don't help the glasses for me, as those who wear glasses know. So thank you, so this evening I give you a final update regarding my goals. I believe it was the end of February when we last looked at this. It was originally on for a couple meetings before that, but because of just how busy the committee has been, we tabled that until the end of February. But the goals, and I've provided supporting documents online for all of you, some of them are related, and I've added to them since we last met, but the, these goals were established, again, you know, taking consideration, my core values as an administrator, the Plymouth Public Schools' mission and district, as well as a lot of things that are going on this year as a new superintendent. So it's certainly been a busy year. I think we've had, in addition to the recovery efforts in, in the pandemic, we've also had a lot of great change in our leadership team, hiring several new administrators, assistant principal at PCIS, new athletic director, alternative director, as well as essentially an entire new central office administrative team with a new business manager, two assistant superintendents, a director of special education who will begin in July, and Dr. Rogers has been assuming that role the entire year. So we, there's been a lot of change that's taking place, and a lot of goals in addition to these goals, but I, I really feel confident that our team has really worked together to continue to move forward and to make progress, even with everything that's been going on. So I'll, I'll try to be brief with this update, but their first goal has to do with recovery and reentry plan for, for students and staff in terms of the, the key actions and having, having a plan in place that serves as our framework to make decisions, looking to acquire grant funds to support technology challenges, you know, supporting our social, emotional needs of our students, creating a task force to support and, and evaluate and to provide some feedback regarding our, our COVID situation and how we respond to the evolving circumstances of the pandemic, as well as implementing, district have a high-quality learned programs in place, either hybrid, virtual, or full in-person, in intentionally monitoring that work. So in terms of an April progress report, I think in terms of a recovery and reentry plan, our, we, we initiated our plan in September, which has allowed us to successfully provide a hybrid model of instruction. We opened up providing a remote option to over 600 students, K to 12. More recently, with the return of our full-person learning, our elementary schools on March 29th, our remote academy enrollment has dropped to 275. Our secondary schools are also, were scheduled, the time that I wrote this, were scheduled to return today, and they obviously have. The health and safety measures and protocols in place, the result of all of our planning have been. have been, I would say, overall, very successful. At the time of this update that I wrote, wrote this report, we have identified 405 students, approximately 5.6%, and 111 staff, approximately 8% with confirmed COVID cases. And our data, which I provided a link to our dashboard, so you could look at that longitudinal data, that suggested that four of the 111 confirmed cases were due to school exposure. And again, that was the time that I wrote this, about a week ago. Supporting remote instruction through the acquisition of several grants, our district has successfully implemented a one-to-one initiative for the first time. So we're really proud of that. The purpose was really to promote more equitable access to technology. I think we all realized how the discrepancy and disparity that we witnessed when we closed last year in March. So I'm really happy that we're able to pull that up. So this really allows us to have a seamless integration of technology on the direction of our staff. And we've had an amazing technology staff to support our administrative team and our teachers and the deployment of Chromebooks in grades five to 11 dedicated, and then the availability of a dedicated device in K to four. So it's really great. I've included a detailed website that is on our website that really highlights the tremendous initiative of so many people in regarding this, as well as a video that was just released to the, I believe it was released already, but if it hadn't, it should be released very soon, which was a great video highlighting the one-to-one initiative. In terms of the COVID task force, we tried to change that name. It seemed a little, I don't know, didn't really like it after I wrote it. So we called it the Community Health Advisory Team or CHAT. Again, as an advisory board to try to bring information to, to get a broad perspective from students and teachers and parents and other members of our community to support any, any decisions that we would need to make. So this advisory team was initiated in October and is met on a monthly basis. I attached the schedule of meetings. They're held through Zoom, again, in an advisory manner to gauge our practices in relation to the pandemic. And we've had several suggestions that have come out of that, and it's really helped to also sort of gauge how people are thinking and get some questions answered and inform our practices, I said. Another thing which I didn't mention before in relation to this, in addition to the chat group, is we've had a health and safety committee meeting, and this is a meeting with administration and our union leadership to look at this. So we've, in addition to holding our chat meetings monthly, our administrative team has worked very collaboratively with the leadership of both EAPC and COBRE unions in an effort to address matters of health and safety as well. So this was established prior to the start of the school year in an effort to maintain collaboration and transparency around a number of things that we were doing in terms of facility accommodations, our health and safety protocols, cleaning and disinfecting among a number of things. So these meetings were held on a very regular basis in the summer and at the beginning of the year. And now we've been using them periodically as the need arises, prior to a change or an implementation to kind of go through things. It's been very, it's been a very good process and it's been very appreciated by everyone that's been involved. So, you know, I think an example of a great working relationship, working relationship that we have. Also, in terms of communication, our COVID-19 website was set up in an effort to be committed to our transparency and communications regarding all matters of COVID-19. So this website is updated regularly and houses news and updates from my office, as well as weekly health data, state guidance, and information, no videos. So anything COVID-related, we try to connect it here. We also have it through our social media coordinator as well, but try to house as much as we think is important right there, most important things right there. In terms of student support, since the start of the school year, our district has been able to utilize available grants that supports emotional, social emotional needs of students and staff. You've heard some of the examples tonight as well from some of our principals, but I have included a list of the major competitive grants that we were able to receive in the document that you have before you this evening, such as our summer and vacation learning program, the Safe and Supportive Schools Competitive Grant, and then our Supporting Students Behavioral Mental Health and Wellness Grant, which we were able to successfully actually get two years in a row, which was, which was very encouraging. I've listed some of the SEL supports and initiatives that have occurred district-wide, and this certainly isn't an exhaustive list, but just to give you an idea of some of the events and activities that have taken place to support, again, everyone's social emotional wellbeing, staff, students, and families. I believe that Mrs. Wilson mentioned one of them as well, parenting during COVID, you know, things like that, to try to find as many different ways to support all of our community as much as we possibly can. So that's very encouraging. In terms of goal two, effective entry and direction setting, so this is really more about my, my entry plan, which I presented to the committee back at the beginning, I think it was my first meeting with you all at the retreat. So while my entry plan, and we talked about this when I reported out in February, so why, the plan has been developed and initiated due to tremendous attention, addressing the pandemic and our return to school efforts, coupled with the fact that our district's strategic plan had never been completed. My recommendation at the time was to, was to delay that and to do them hand in hand with the strategic plan. I felt it was more important rather than trying to rush a process to be very deliberate with the work that we're doing through the strategic planning process, which also got disrupted last year, to go at them hand in hand. So, you know, in the meanwhile, we've been looking at, I've been looking at data, we've been looking at survey data. We've conducted several one-to-one meetings, administered surveys to thousands of people since last year. We've met with all the school councils and some of the PTAs, and of course, to try to take this information and call through it and present to this committee in May, our findings and recommendations that will help take us not only into next year, but the next few years as we come out of this pandemic and hopefully get back to a more normal, normal situation. In terms of goal three, maintaining momentum during the transition, keeping the district moving forward during the transition by working with principals and other district leaders to ensure meaningful progress is made on critical goals. So this really has to do with meeting with our administrators, conducting our evaluations with our administrative team. So we initiated this as a, as a leadership team back in October with our principals, coordinators, and directors, and I've attached that agenda for you to review, as well as a list of all of the evaluation schedules. So in an effort to best support our schools, I've made regular visits a priority this year, which has been probably some of my best time of my day, for sure. So in addition to those visits, I've scheduled regular walkthroughs with principals, coordinators, and directors since October, where I've had the opportunity to literally visit hundreds of classrooms, spend a lot of time with our administrators, and talking very specific, not only about our reentry and COVID protocols, but talking about instructional practices, social emotional supports. It's really a wonderful opportunity for me to have that one-on-one conversation with each and every administrator that works in our schools. So I have included an update of my scheduled walkthroughs by building and date. So as of this report, I have conducted 92 scheduled, again, these are the scheduled monthly walkthroughs that I do, not the my random visits like today to buildings, but the ones where I schedule, where I'm spending at least an hour with each administrator in a very structured setting. So this has been, again, I think, very valuable and something that you'll see, I know that you'll see from me in terms of some of our goals for next year, you'll see this as a collective practice of our larger administrative team, and I can, I'll report out that in May, when I'm thinking about that. So I've attached a list of my complete walkthroughs by date, administrator and school, for you as well. And then the last goal, just to be brief, as you all know, because you've agreed to support this, is my, my participation in the new superintendent induction program, which is really a wonderful opportunity to be with new superintendents, retired superintendents that serve as coaches, and we meet regularly, approximately six hours a month as an entire cohort. And then we have opportunities where we're meeting with Dr. LaCroix, who you've met before, she came here to our retreat. We work in small groups and one-on-one with her as well. And it's really a great opportunity to just be reflective on practices, and we're all going through similar challenges. And it's a great opportunity not only to talk about content, but also talk about situational things. And I've included a more recent updated memo from Dr. LaCroix verifying my participation with that. So I hope I did that relatively thoroughly, but as quickly as possible. I know that you've been sitting here for a long time listening. Happy to answer any questions that you have, too.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Campbell?
I don't think so.
All right. I think we can get through the rest of this in a half an hour. We don't have to vote to extend, so we should be okay. So that, that leads us into the next agenda item, which is the documentation in preparation for the summative superintendent evaluation. So I'm sure you all saw on the electronic school board, there is all of the documents that you need. Are we going to send them to them individually as well? Yes. So they'll be sent to you after today. And, oh, she's got them right there. So there's even some, I, I'm sure you'll see, there's some reference guides in here too, evaluating superintendent during COVID. There's an evaluation guide, the DESE guide to evaluating superintendents, and then the end-of-cycle evaluation form. And we all know that this form's not fun to fill out, so I know, that's the first thing Dr. Sorenson told me when I became chair. Yes.
When, where did you say we could find?
Well, it's on electronic school board right now, but I believe Mrs. Grimes is going to give it to us as well.
She's, they're going to get it.
Yep, yep. She asked them, print it out. So anyways, if we could, what I want, I need to have those back sent to me by April 23rd, which is a Friday. I know. It's, we have to get it in before the, before the election. April 23rd.
Yep. That's not that.
Wow.
Well, we need to, we need to deliver it to him on May 3rd, which is the first meeting before the election.
Yep.
So if you get them to me by the 23rd, that gives me some time to, to put them together and summarize them. I know it's close, so get going. And I know, Dr. Sorenson, I might, you know, not everybody sends them in on time, but if you could please just, you know, we'll, we'll chase you down if we have to. Is there anything that you need to add to that, other than what I just said, Ms. Grimes or Dr. Campbell? No? Okay. Any questions, Dr. Sorenson?
Just clarification on, on Dr. Campbell's goal number two, we're, we're just not going to address it at all. Is that correct in our evaluations? Is it, is it number two, the one that we, that, or is it?
This is regarding strategic planning, incorporating the strategic plan?
Yeah, yes.
That was my recommendation back in February to just, it was to move in that direction, and my, my feeling was that I had the support of the committee by delaying that process because of the strategic plan not being.
So goal number two. We won't address that one at all.
Okay. Do you want me to address it? Is that we? Yeah, okay. So we're just not going to?
We're just not going to address it. And I believe it's appropriate, based on what happened.
Absolutely, absolutely. Ms. Burgess? So goal number two, which is regarding strategic planning, we're not going, we're going to leave off. We're not going to address that one.
Not, no goal number two?
But we could send an email too, clarifying that to everybody, so that way you don't have to.
That is my question.
Yeah, you can have it in writing.
In looking, in looking at the, the list of administrators and all, on that list is an assistant sped director, but I didn't see the sped director, the male that we had interviewed.
He's not starting till July.
He starts July 1.
What?
He starts July 1.
Okay.
The special ed director is Dr. Rogers.
I was going to say, I knew I interviewed him.
Yes, yes, she did. And he's coming.
Okay.
Signed on the dotted line.
Well, I didn't see him, and I said, hmm, where'd he go?
He didn't leave yet.
No.
He doesn't come.
All right, any other questions on, on that item? Good? All right, good. And so moving on, committee member reports. Anybody have any reports for the committee? I mean, any committee reports for us? No? I have one quick, one quick announcement. I, I met with Representative Zarros, if I, if I pronounced that right. He, he and I zoomed the other day, and very nice conversation. I had never met him before. He is very eager to get involved as much as he can with us, reach out, help us, anything that he can do. He, that's Representative Zarros. He, he took Randy Hunt's seat.
Oh, he's down in the, yeah.
He's self-premise.
Precinct nine area, yeah.
But it sounds like he's going to be a lot more involved than the past.
Yeah, okay.
And he's really nice. Sideline, I watched a Netflix show and he's in it because of, it's about the Elizabeth, I mean, the Gardner Museum, and he is a police officer. But I had a nice conversation with him. And that leads me to the reminder that this Friday is our virtual Day of the Hill. And if you, you don't have to pay, but you do have to register to go. I did reach out to all of our representatives, and I haven't heard back from Senator Moran yet, but all three representatives are not available, but their staff members are. So I am going to go ahead and schedule a Zoom with us and them for 1:00, for anyone that can come. And I know I did include our students in that email, so hopefully you can get some accommodations with school or arrangements to attend some of that. And so I look forward to seeing everybody. Day of the Hill, I believe, is from 9:00 to 12:00, and then I gave everybody a break. It's only going to be a quick meeting. We're just going to introduce ourselves. If anybody has any questions for the reps, if they have any questions for us, they're going to get our position statements from MASC ahead of time. And that's, that's all that I have. So if anybody has any questions, Ms. Badger?
I think she has a question, I think I don't.
Tomorrow night, we had, we had that.
Tomorrow night, we have a rehearsal for the League of Women Voters.
And I can't go because I'm chairman of the Energy Committee, and we meet at the same exact same time.
All right.
So.
I can report back to you how the rehearsal goes if you like, before Thursday, which is going to be the actual forum.
It's going to be a Zoom, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And then the PAC TV one is Friday.
What happens, that's all.
Yes, I can, I'll make a note to touch base with you.
I'll be there on Wednesday, but I can't be there on Tuesday.
Yeah. Well, it's not Wednesday, it's Thursday.
Thursday, whatever day.
Okay. You scared me because I take my class at Harvard on Wednesday nights. All right. Ms. Badger?
I just wanted to report really quick. Pilgrimage Collaborative, we had a meeting last week, I feel like, yes, last week. And we're really excited. They have two of their students, junior students, who are really excited about getting a school council together. And so it'll be the first time that they have any sort of student-run student leadership. And so they're really working to get that together. And it was really fun to have them come and present to us and, you know, share with us their excitement and their working through, you know, how to set up like bylaws and things like that. So it was, it was really, really nice to see. But other than that, you know, the collaborative is, things are going well. We're, you know, we're, everything, all the collaboratives are struggling and, you know, to make it and make sure you stay in the, you know, green and don't head on in the red. But overall, the collaborative is doing really well.
Great. Any, anything else? All right, then we'll move right into the building committee.
Okay, I got this one this time. We discussed the work being done on the fire stations, went over the different issues. Manomet might require an addition. West Plymouth, the mechanicals are an issue. You know, so they're still working on the plans with the engineers, whatnot. And there's also talk about maybe at some point someday, a new headquarters, but that's not part of this project. The DPW director testified on the existing facility and that we should start putting it on the radar, that he needs a new facility. The one they're at, they've been there 20 years and they've outgrown it for some time, and it's not OSHA compliant. So he just put it on the radar that we need to look at that in the near future.
All right, and get the building committee, personnel reports.
Yes, this evening, we have four classified appointments and eight resignations. That was it.
All right, thank you. And anything for old or new business? Well, we'll do one at a time, sorry. Old business? All right. New business? Okay. Okay. And now, we move on to the Consent Agenda. Does anybody need to make a motion to remove anything? All right. Do we have a motion on the Consent Agenda? Mr. Pizzano?
My motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Great. Do I have a second? I was going to try to give you a chance.
I did my hand was here anyway.
Mr. Morgan seconds it.
I wasn't.
Any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the approval of the Consent Agenda. Dr. Sorenson?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess? Mr. Pizzano?
Yes.
And Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The Consent Agenda is approved. And it is 10:06, and the meeting of the Plymouth School Committee is adjourned.